Item number one, discussion and consideration for adoption, including any possible amendment of supplemental budget adjustments to the following funds for fiscal year 2021-22. Increased reimbursed projects, revenue intergovernmental eighteen thousand six seventy-four, intergovernmental eighty-seven, one hundred thousand, revenue intergovernmental sixty, Department sixty-four, eleven, six ninety-four, intergovernmental thirty, Department thirty-seven, fifty thousand, Department fifteen, six thousand, revenue intergovernmental, Department six, sixty-one thousand, revenue intergovernmental twenty-three, fifty-seven, four thirteen, expenses to animal welfare, eighteen, six seventy-four, expenses for economic, Department eighty-seven, a hundred thousand, expenses for fire, eleven, six ninety-four, housing, thirty-seven, fifty thousand, expenses for neighborhood services, fifteen, for six thousand, and expenses for park and rec, sixty-one thousand, and expenses for park, fifty-seven, four sixteen. Next time we'll do this on a consent agenda so I don't have to read that ever again. So what this is for is so we can go ahead and distribute, distribute the grant money from the Board of Grantors to departments and get the money out to the community grants that was awarded by the Board of Grantors that are, you know, like the baseball club and some of these people, they're ready to get their money now so they, for the spring sports.
That being said, there's any discussion on this item? Carrying none, chaired entertaining motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor indicate the standing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Next item, Mr. Ryan.
PC twenty-one oh-six, discussion consideration, including possible amendment for acceptance of the Park Lawn Drive and National Avenue Revitalization Plan and Design Code. Billy, or Robert's going to start this and then we'll go from there.
Good evening. Speaking of community grants, in two thousand nineteen, we pursued and were successful in obtaining a sixty thousand dollar Board of Grantors grant to fund a study of the Park Lawn National District. We felt like the hospital was in transition and there was a high likelihood we would have a new operator. Of course, we were fortunate enough to see SSM Health take over the hospital. And right after that happened, we went into a nationwide search to find a professional planning organization that could come in and evaluate the entire district and make recommendations on improving it to a more attractive area and not just a medical district per se. Came down to three finalists, all very good firms, but Saint Anthony, or SSM Health and the city helped filter it down to the one that we felt was best. And it turned out it was TSW Planning with headquarters in Atlanta and an office in Tulsa, a one-woman office that's headed by Katie O'Millia. And she is here to talk about the elements that went into the plan and describe it in greater detail. So, Katie?
Before Katie starts, I would like to point out, and I think Dr. Lewis at the end was, is going to speak just for a moment, but I just want to point out that this was a collaboration between SSM's leadership with Dr. Lewis, Stacy Coleman, their strategic planner, and Bill McVeigh, their architect, and then city staff being Billy Harless, Robert Coleman, myself, and Petya, I can't, huh? Yeah, that's the word. Oh, did I leave anybody out? Okay, good. All right, Katie.
Okay, well, thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with you all. We've enjoyed working with SSM and the city on this project, and we think it's really exciting for the city of Midwest City. If you want to keep going. So the, you know, as Robert mentioned, the project purpose here was for us to work with you all to establish a vision and goals for the area surrounding SSM Health Hospital. You can see the area, the study area is highlighted there on the slide. Those are all of the properties that we looked at as part of this study. In addition to setting a vision and goals, the, one of the purposes of the master plan is to outline economic development strategies for how this area could redevelop. And then we would, you know, the idea is to create a master plan and a design code that implements the vision that we lay forth in the master plan. Next slide. So this is what the district looks like today. Predominantly, it's built around the automobile. There are large surface parking lots. A lot of the properties sit vacant at the, at the moment. And so to begin the process was really talking about what isn't working for the district and to formulate ideas about what, where does this district want to go? What does it want to be in the future? Again, here's some of the vacant parcels that you see in the area. There's actually been some demolition that's taken place to buildings over the course of our, our study work here. So it's really primed and ready for redevelopment. So this has been about a seven-month-long process. As, as Tim mentioned, this has been a very collaborative process, both with the hospital, the city, as well as with the public. So we began in August and we did a kickoff with our steering committee, and we'll look at the, the details of that. But from there, we kind of jumped into vision and planning, and we did that with basically the stakeholders and the users in mind. So we met with the Ridgecrest neighborhood in October. We also engaged the hospital staff and administration. We did a series of surveys and had a meeting with them to talk about what their needs for the district might be as they work and possibly want to live in this area. And from all of that gathered, we, we packaged that into the implementation in the master plan that you're seeing tonight. So again, we kicked off the project. Our, our project committee took a tour of SSM, their midtown Oklahoma City campus. If any of you have been down there, you'll know that it's a very urban-style campus. It's oriented toward walkability and the pedestrian experience. And so we walked around, we talked about things that were, that we felt like could easily be incorporated into our district here. What were some of the things that were working and really successful and made this a very vibrant area? And so we, we came back after that tour, and we all sat around a table and started putting our ideas and visions and goals down on paper. And so these are the six overarching vision and goals for the project. So one, we want to promote connectivity and accessibility throughout the district, and this means increasing people's ability to walk, bike, and have a network that's safe to move around the district, but also connects to the wider trail system that the city has. We, we want to make sure that we're encouraging placemaking through public art, new landscaping and signage. And then, of course, attracting new businesses and industries to the district is going to be vital for its success. And so we want to make sure that what we're doing creates kind of a twenty-four-seven atmosphere so that when people are working here during the day, the district is serving their needs. And as people move into the district, that we're serving their needs in the evenings and the livability of the area. And so before we completely started putting designs together, we, we felt it was very important that we undertake a market study as part of the project. TSW, we, we do a lot of planning throughout the country, and we think that one of our strongest, you know, our strongest things about our company is that our planning is grounded in reality. And a lot of times, we do that by partnering with economists that look at the project, the project area that we're undertaking. And we really want to make sure that what we're putting on paper and what we're drawing and planning for is realistic and is grounded in reality. So that market study was about a two-month-long process. And this is some of the figures and demands, this is the highlights that came out of that. You can see that if we were to create a destination and a reason for people to come to this area and a draw, these are the demands that we realistically think the district could support. So retail services up to sixty-five thousand square feet. Obviously, there's some medical office that, that makes a lot of sense, but there's also some conventional office, maybe up to fifty thousand square feet, that we feel like the, the market could support. We do feel like there's a, a mix of both urban residential as well as a for-cell residential product that would work really well in this area. And then very long-term, probably, you know, twenty, twenty-six, or even further down the road, when we've really created a vibrant district, we don't think it's infeasible to see a hotel locate here. So this was some of the, the input and the, the outcomes of the public outreach that we did. There was a lot of, there was a high support for things like outdoor dining, obviously, you know, more parks and open space, trails. There was a high support for increased signage and branding and wayfinding for the district. And in terms of the, the built environment, most people supported a moderate three-story style building. And there was high support for a higher-density residential product like a townhome. And so these are just some of the things that helped us to, to formulate the vision and the plan. If you want to go to the next slide. So this is the master plan for the district, and I think what you'll notice right away is the, the attention and the detail to the buildings and the way that they're, that they're situated on the site. So when you are trying to create a walkable district and you're trying to create a sense of place and a destination, it's very important to get the urban design details right. And what I mean by that is it's very important where the parking is located, where the buildings sit on the site, because what we want is a very engaging streetscape that as you're walking down it, it's a, it's a nice, you know, inviting walk. There are street trees, there are street furniture. The buildings are pulled right up to the sidewalks so that you're walking by shops, and it's a very activated space. And so that's what this, this master plan does. You'll notice that the buildings are pulled up to the street. We'll look at the new streetscapes, but we've redesigned Park Lawn and National with a multi-use path that is incorporated into that streetscape. So we're ensuring that all users and mobilities can have access through the district and enjoy the new shopping and retail and dining. And then you'll notice that the parking lots generally, while there is a lot of parking, is hidden behind the buildings. So that's a very stark contrast from what you see in the district today. And so let's, and at the heart of the master plan is what we're calling the green, the central green. And again, when you're looking to create a vibrant, walkable district, you, you need a draw, you need a reason for people to go to that district. And so we see this as the destination place for all. This is the hub of the district. So it can serve the surrounding community with park space, playground space. It can be programmed for community events such as festivals and farmers' markets, but it also serves the, the day-to-day needs of the hospital staff, the people visiting folks in the hospital. And it's a really good, we've seen this, this type of land use where restaurants and businesses want to be around that space because it's so activated. So this is really going to be the heart of the district. And then everything else, we, we feel like, if we were to get this piece right, we feel like the rest of it will, will kind of take care of itself. The parking lot that surrounds it, we envision this to be designed more as a plaza space. So we want it to have, instead of just being a plain asphalt striped parking lot, we want to make sure that the design of that actually expands the, the park and the park usability. So things like having a curbless treatment at the park edge, you've got nice pavers that spill out into the parking lot area. So if you are having a festival or event, you could close those two, the two end spaces off and then spill out and use more of that parking lot. So it really kind of helps expand the park when you need more space. And things like food trucks and things that are engaging, it's a, it's a great way to use that space. No problem. So as I, as I was saying earlier, connectivity is a really big, it's a key item for creating a walkable district. And so we wanted to make sure that we were giving people lots of options to move throughout the district as well as connect to the larger trail network that the city already has. So the dotted dashed line that you see there along Park Lawn and National, that's an on-street multi-use path that, it's about ten feet wide. And that's in addition to just a, another, you know, sidewalk area that has outdoor dining and things like that. We'll look at the street section in just a minute. But in addition to those, you'll notice a loop around the backside of the hospital. This is what we're calling just a multi-loop trail connection. So this is really predominantly for the people that work in the district day-to-day. We noticed when we were out on site that they really, there's, there's little to no sidewalks that exist today. And there's really no space to get out and walk on your lunch break, to be out in nature, to just, you know, if you work in the medical field, sometimes you just need to take a breather. And there's just really nowhere for you to go currently in the district and no way to safely get around without sidewalks. So connecting that loop to the bigger trail network throughout the district, we think is really important. And it also ties the idea of health and wellness and getting out and being active to the district as well. And then as the, as the streetscape continues from National across Midwest Boulevard, we, we envision in the future that that multi-use trail would continue and connect to your, your existing Soldier Creek Trail to the east. Next slide. So these are just some three-D renderings of how we imagine that central green to function and feel. Again, you could have a really great pavilion where you've got outdoor concerts, you know, movies in the park, I mean, you name it. It's anything that you can think to program, it could be a really great space for gathering. Again, outdoor dining, various options for seating so that you can have lunch is really great. There's also space, we envision kind of a multi-use fountain area where a lot of times kids will go out there and use it as a splash pad and play in it. But it also cools the space, kind of helps with the heat and keeping, making a more pleasant space to sit. And there's playgrounds areas and things. So there's a little bit of something for everybody because we want to make sure that everybody feels welcome in this space. So this is the new envisioned streetscape for Park Lawn Drive. And basically, what we've done is we've just worked within the right-of-way that you already have. But instead of having, you know, two or four lanes, two lanes each direction, you know, dominated by the vehicle, we've, we've basically taken that space and recaptured it for the multi-use trail on one side. There would still be sidewalks in addition to that multi-use trail. And then we've incorporated angled on-street parking because we want to be sure that people have convenient parking, but for the hospital as well. We want to make sure that along those, both of those streetscapes, Park Lawn and National, that there's convenient parking right in front of the hospital as well. So we haven't, we do need to take this a step further, but we envision right now that from the entrance at Reno, that we would keep the boulevard to a portion to, probably about to where the ER is, because as we rebuild the streetscape, we need to make sure we keep that access. And it's probably, at that point, it's probably a logical place to then neck down the road and start to create this newer streetscape. So that's what we envision right now. Next slide. So this is a three-D rendering of how that streetscape would look. So you've, you see you've got the, the dedicated multi-use pathway. And again, this is for faster-moving modes of travel, biking, scooters, people out for a run. They can use this path, but there's still to the side, people that are walking, strolling along or want to sit and eat, they also have space as well. And it's, the on-street parking creates a barrier for, you know, the pedestrians and is a buffer from the, the cars driving by. So it's a nicer, it feels like a safer walk. It's, it's just a nicer walk for people through the district. And this is the street section for National Avenue. Again, it's, it's identical to what's happening on Park Lawn. It's got the angled parking, the multi-use trail continues along, and it's got the sidewalks on each side. And it still continues with the two twelve-foot lanes. So we're still accommodating the vehicle, both parking and, you know, for traffic purposes, but there's just less of an emphasis on it. So this is a new roundabout that was designed at the intersection of Park Lawn and National. We think this was kind of a really great opportunity to flank the park and be kind of the, you know, the center or the hub of this district. It offers a lot of great opportunity for public art or some kind of, you know, destination element that goes along with the branding of the district. It also makes this intersection safer for pedestrians. So as we're starting to incorporate the sidewalks and the bike trails and all of those things, we want to make sure that the car slows down, and we want to make sure that we get people around that intersection safely. And a, and a traffic roundabout was a really great way to accomplish those. And this is the multi-use loop trail that goes along the backside of the hospital. Again, this is probably a ten-foot-wide paved path, and we see this as an opportunity to incorporate landscaping and lighting, possibly some restoration in the creek and detention area back there, and really give it a nicer look. And it becomes a destination on its own, albeit not a, you know, a retail-focused one. It's more of a natural or a nature-focused destination. So part of the master plan is, it's our job to help you all and give you guys a roadmap for how to implement this plan. Because what we don't want to do is draw these pretty pictures and then not have a way or a path forward for how we think it should be implemented. So what we did was, we went through and we, we categorized and kind of said, okay, these are the immediate next steps that if we want to continue with this momentum and we really want to see this district come to life, these are some of the immediate things that we feel like you all as a, as a city and an organization need to do. So obviously, we're on, we're on track, we're here tonight, so we're here to adopt the plan. So check, check that box one, we're good there. We do think that after the plan is adopted, it would be a good idea to go back and revisit your city's comprehensive plan and your Trails Master Plan and make sure that you update those to reflect the recommendations for this district so that all of those documents are talking to each other from a policy standpoint. Next, we really think that the city should undergo branding and marketing exercise for the district. It's, it's very critical when you're trying to create a new place from kind of nothing that, that the, the marketing and the branding be really on key. And so that as you, as you develop the district, you can promote it really easily through things like its own website, you know, and branding and promotion through magazines and local news and all of these things. And the idea is to get eyeballs and get people excited about the project and to come to the district. So we, we think that branding and marketing is a really critical piece as well that goes hand in hand. And the next three really have to deal with the actual moving toward construction of something in the district. So there needs to be a survey that takes place so you know all of the property, where the boundaries are, where the right-of-ways are, where the easements are, so that when it is time to construct something, you have all of that already in place. And then next would be, you know, looking at the infrastructure of the place. While we did a cursory look at that during the master plan, we did not do a deep dive into stormwater, stormwater capacity as the district gets built. So we will need to look comprehensively at drainage. You'll need to look at your utility infrastructure, you know, water, sewer, to make sure that you have the capacity, that as this district grows, that you stay out in front of being able to service all of those new buildings, all those toilets, you know, as the, as the district builds out, you want to make sure that you can, you know, capture the stormwater appropriately, all of those things. So it's just another deep, deeper dive into engineering that needs to be done. It's just a standard part of the development process, but it's important. And then fi, and then finally, finalizing the streetscape and the Central Park design, that is going to be the critical piece for getting this district off the ground, both from the city's perspective as well as from the hospital's perspective.
For just a second?
Sure.
Before you move forward, I have a couple of questions and a comment really quickly.
Okay.
So looking at your list of immediate next steps first and foremost, I guess my question is to you, we have issues with regard to the aging infrastructure in our city. Coupled with, we have had a lot of drainage issues. So wouldn't it behoove us to move the comprehensive drainage and utility analysis for the district up above and beyond so many of these other things, including the branding and so forth? Because it seems like it would be a waste of money for us to work on marketing and branding for a district that we find out that we cannot actually put to fruition without addressing drainage and utility analysis first.
Well, I think that all of these, we're talking broadly here for the first two years. So if you, it doesn't matter if you do the drainage before the branding, I don't think, because ultimately, we do think something's going to happen here.
The first thing we're going to do is the ALTA survey. I mean, those, they're really not ranked in order.
Yeah, okay.
We probably should have ranked those in order, but yeah, I mean, some of them will be coterminous.
And some, I was going to say, and some are happening simultaneously.
You've got to be simultaneous.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Some are happening simultaneously. So it's not like they're happening in a vacuum and we're checking a box as we go. As we're doing branding, we can also be doing the survey, or we can also be looking at the stormwater while we're doing the survey. So it's not that it's got to be a linear process.
Sure, and I understand that, and I appreciate the fact that the survey would come first, and that makes logical sense to me. I'm just saying, from my personal opinion, I would be against the idea of us spending money for branding and marketing the district before we have the cornerstones of whether we can actually have this district based upon whether we have the drainage availability and we have the ability to expand the aging infrastructure that's under that area to accommodate what we're proposing to put in that area. So that's, I mean, my personal two cents worth on that. So then, moving backward, the, and I forgot your terminology for it, but I'm going to call it the rear loop that you had proposed type of thing and doing a large...
Oh, the multi-trail loop around the backside of the hospital?
Yes, uh-huh, with like cement. I guess my question is, is concrete the only material that's being contemplated there? Because it seems like with the forward-thinking-ness of this project, perhaps having another material for that trail might behoove us?
Yeah, I mean, let me be clear, this is not the final design. These are concepts, these are visions, these help kind of set the stage and the framework for what we want to do. But certainly, yeah, as we look further into these, we can look at a myriad of materials. Typically, concrete is the most cost-effective, and it tends to be the, the standard because you can meet ADA really well with it in terms of its surface and its accessibility. And it also has very, the maintenance on it is very low as compared to asphalt or decomposed granite or something like that. But there are a myriad of materials we could explore for that trail, for sure.
And then I have one other question.
Okay.
In terms of the green space that you're referencing, and I... In terms of the green space that you're referencing, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the draw of that, but just like talking about doing a stage and using it for community purposes and functions, I mean, we have one of those that we're putting directly north of town center right now, that's part of our bond project money, and what I don't see as part of this plan, and I'm curious if this was contemplated, is the idea of building a Healthy Living Center there, like what Presby's Healthy Living Center used to be, or working with the YMCA to put a new YMCA there, that would also afford childcare for workers in the hospital district, as well as be a center similar to what Oklahoma City did, there's a really geared for seniors, but like the Healthy Living Centers that they have that are fitness-oriented, to be in this space as one of the attractions or draws, which would also bring you people from the community going there for purposes of using the Healthy Living Center, and for the benefit of workers in the district for having childcare, I mean, is that something that was discussed?
I agree, that was one of the things, childcare was right up there on the list of things when we interviewed, yeah, hospital staff, they said that would be phenomenal to have that here, and what we haven't gotten to yet is there's a whole design code that accompanies this master plan, and it allows for a wide variety of mix of uses, so if a facility like that was interested and wanted to come here and develop, they wouldn't be precluded from doing that, they, you know, they would be able to do that if we wanted. Now, is there one on the table ready to develop right now? No, not that I know of, but we certainly wouldn't preclude them from doing that, that would be a welcomed use, I think.
And what we're trying to accomplish is more of a public-private partnership, I mean, we obviously can't afford to build all the things to everybody.
Right.
So we're, you know, it's a partnership, certain things SSM's going to do, certain things we're investing in that fall within the trust and to ensure that we have authority to invest in, and so, but the design code will allow us to make sure that we have the integrity of the architecture.
Well, I guess that was my question, is because we've talked before about our desire, shall we say, to have a new Y put in, and like the downtown Y, they have both the fitness facility and the daycare associated with it, and it's right there, close to where Saints Downtown Campus is, so I guess that was my question here, is trying to put that in, and I would assume that would be a priority element for people who are working in the district, because similar to what you're talking about, in terms of justifying having an outdoor space to be able to go out and take a breath, have some lunch, whatever, like the downtown Y, personally, my daughter went there, and like, you could go at lunchtime and have lunch with your child, if you could arrange it in your schedule.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I mean, I think that would be a huge benefit to employees that are working in the district, too.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Can you flip through, I think we were maybe at the recommendations or implementation slide, we can keep going from there. So as I talked about, we're not adopting it tonight, we're not looking at this as part of it tonight, but the process did include a design code and design standards and guidelines, and the reason that we packaged these together is because it's really critical in districts like this, that you adhere to basic kind of urban design principles, how do the buildings sit on the site, where's the parking, where are the doors located, are there a lot of windows along the street, are we ensuring that we're, you know, encouraging high-quality building materials and architecture and things like those, and most Euclidean standard zoning doesn't get into those design elements, and so it's important that in order to actually develop the vision that we've put forth, you need a code that does that to ensure that framework is in place, and those regulations are in place, so that when development does occur, that everybody is playing by the same standards, and they know what to expect when they're developing in this district. So these are just some examples, our codes are really highly graphic, it's, we think it's really important when we write design codes, that an everyday layperson should be able to pick up that code, read it, and be able to understand it, I shouldn't have to be an attorney to know what I need to do to develop in this district, and so the graphics really help to reinforce the code language, so these are just some excerpts from the pages, you can see, it talks about the types of buildings, the typologies, we're really showing you specifically what setback we're talking about, so it's very clear where the regulation is being applied and how it's being applied, if you want to go to the next slide. And then, as you get past the code, there's a section for design standards and guidelines that touch on everything from signage to landscape material, landscape and, you know, hardscape materials, what's appropriate, what's high-quality, and so again, all of these components work together to implement the master plan as envisioned. So with that, I'll take any more questions, otherwise, yeah.
When you all design these, do you consider SEPTAD design, incorporate those into the design?
Yeah, I mean, when we design, we try to design places for everybody, we want to think about all different ages, mobility's, so yes, I mean, I think that that's a key component of the trail and the park, and all of the, really, the whole master plan is kind of built around people, so we want to make sure that, yeah, we're looking at all those components, for sure.
Does anyone else have any questions? Does anyone in the public have any questions about this plan? Yes, ma'am, come on forward.
Hello. My name is Linda Smith, and I live in Ridgecrest, thank you, are you calling me short? There you go. I appreciate, we attended the meeting where you invited Ridgecrest to attend, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness with which you approached everything. At that time, you were just asking for ideas and design ideas, residential ideas, pretty much everything that you've covered. I am a little concerned, because we are being encroached upon on Glen Haven by some new residential properties, that was a long, drawn-out discussion, and I think we've arrived at like about 80 residences on that side.
Yes, ma'am.
Now we're talking about the other side, and while I think a lot of what you have to say is really nice, as far as I can tell, I am a little concerned with the number of residences, plus access to the neighborhood. Are any steps being taken to minimize people driving through the neighborhood to go get where they want to go, and because it's faster to go through the neighborhood, it really shouldn't be, but if it is, I'd be very concerned with easy access to our neighborhood. The number of residences, the three-story apartment complex troubles me, because that's like 200 to 250 maybe residences or something, I think I saw that number up there, that's a lot, with 80 on one side, 200, 250 on this side, that troubles me a little bit, so overall, I'm concerned, because we've already got a lot coming in on Glen Haven, and this is going to be a really busy area, I'd be really happy to see some concern to minimize access to the neighborhood, and to discourage people from taking that route, very, because again, this is an older neighborhood, we want to protect it and encourage it to stay safe. So with that in mind, that's really all I have, just please take a look at that type of thing, I want to support what you're trying to do, I just need to protect our homes, we've had drainage issues, all kinds of things were discussed on the Glen Haven portion of it, so that, major concern, so, you know, protect our neighborhood, and I, parts of it are really nice, so, anyway, I think that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, go ahead, Katie, I do want to address, and I've talked to a couple of members of the audience regarding one of her concerns, and that is the ability to provide housing for the staff at the hospital, being doctors, nurses, and looking at upscale urban living centers, and, you know, where you see, and I was in New Orleans last week, last weekend, and looked at three-story urban living centers from the turn of the century that are still vibrant neighborhoods today, with, whether it's a retail, whether it's a restaurant, whether it's a, you know, a sandwich shop, whatever it is, on those bottom floors, and people want to live in the walkability area, and that's what is important about the park, and why the park needs to be developed correctly, probably needs to be a dog park scattered in there somewhere for these people to live, because they're going to come over and their kids are going to use this park, and this is the kind of housing, and if you go over to St. Anthony's in Midtown, and you look at the development around that hospital, that's what, that's our goal, that's our plan, that's, when we bring that in, that'll probably come in on the parking fields, if you look where things were placed, and those are going to be right across the street from the park, but for us to meet the needs of the doctors and the nurses and other staff that work there, we're going to have to provide some quality living space that's very close to the facility.
And also, ma'am, I'd like to point out, right now, as Park Lawn stands coming in off of Reno, it's a straight shot back into the neighborhood. If you looked at the drawings, there's a roundabout that's been included in there, that's automatically going to slow things down, and impede the flow of traffic through there, except for the medical complex, and plus the park, getting around the park, it's, there's some design aspects that is automatically going to impede access to the backside of the neighborhood, so it looks like they've already taken that into, and the roundabout is going to slow down Oakey's, you know, anyway, so, so I think they've done a good job of kind of impeding that, but I wholeheartedly agree with you that we need to keep an eye on it, and make sure that that's not a speedway down through there.
Yeah, and I would agree and echo what they said, I would also say that the, probably the critical element here that is different about urban residential living in this type of district is your design code, so your standard multifamily zoning does not give you all of the design protections that this code and this design code does, so this by no means would be able to be a standard apartment complex, the materials have to be better, the layout of the building, the units along the, at the bottom level have to have doors that face the street, it has to feel and look and be integrated into the neighborhood, and the design code requires all of that, whereas just your typical multifamily zoning does not, and so I think that that's a key component that this project has, that you don't see utilized throughout the city, that will give you a higher quality urban living product.
You've mentioned the fact that, and Tim just mentioned the fact about the main campus at St. Anthony's, and how it looks now, when in my prior life, I was a police officer in Oklahoma City, and for several years as a supervisor, I was responsible for an attempt to get that, some of the issues that were going on in the neighborhood corrected, we won some, we lost some, but the reason that that neighborhood is revitalized now, and a lot of the crime problems were gone, in fact, we used to bring people down there to train them, because it was so prevalent, it was not hard to find, is what St. Anthony's did down to revitalize that whole area around the hospital, you used to not want to go down there, even Kaiser's Ice Cream, you didn't want to go to, because it just wasn't safe. Now, what they've done in our Park Lawn and National is nothing compared to what it was downtown, that was really, really bad. We have an opportunity, and my belief, that if we stick to our plan, and you brought up an important thing, the design codes, there's like 12 pages of them, that, I mean, it's pretty specific on what-
Yeah, it's extensive, yeah.
That what they can and can't do there, I believe that we're steps ahead of what started downtown with St. Anthony's, and I think here, and it may take five, may take 10 years to get to that, but I think this will be a destination place, and I think the opportunity for the city, it's, we have it right now, we have a partner that's, you know, just them being, just the name Saints brings a lot of credibility to this, so I think this is a very unique, we have to be careful that we don't overdo it too quick, because there are drainage issues, I've been, one of the biggest issues I've had with the city is the drainage, we have to be very, very careful, speeders in the neighborhood, we have to make sure that we protect the property to the west, but I think it can be done.
Yeah.
Thoughtfully, without ruining the neighborhood, and actually revitalizing it, and that's my two cents.
Appreciate that.
Dr. Lewis, did you want to address the council and the audience?
Mayor, I thought you'd never ask. I, obviously, I don't have any questions, but it may, I may have some perspective that would be helpful to the council and to the public, just how Saints and SSM thinks about this, and we've really appreciated being active in the process as partners for this project, so a couple of themes to know about our organization, our founding sisters used to always say, continue courageously, so everything that we do is really in that theme of how do you continue courageously wherever you're missionally planted. Then we have an Oklahoma theme, you heard a little bit about the Midtown Campus, our Oklahoma theme is what does it look like to dig in and build up, and build up the communities that you serve, that's kind of a gritty, oaky way of saying it, right, digging in and building up. So our journey here in Midwest City is very much about partnering to dig in and build up. So healthcare, I'm a physician by background, unfortunately, I have to admit to you that healthcare is an avoidance category, you're not generally rushing to the hospital, or rushing to the doctor unless you have to, and we acknowledge that, so to remove some of the either intimidation, or fearfulness, or avoidance there, where we want to be good servants to the community, one of the ways you do that is make sure that the actual facilities are therapeutic, inviting, beautiful, and that the surrounding area is safe, therapeutic, inviting, I can go on in that regard. So from our perspective, we want to be able to take an avoidance category and make it a place that is more inviting, and somebody would say, that's where I would want to go for care and services if the need arises. So the constituencies that we're having to think about are people who would use our services, and how do we address that, because that's who we are missionally, as a faith-based not-for-profit, that's our missional obligation. In order to do that, and in order to serve, we have to think about our people, and so the staff, the nurses, the physicians, what is going to be optimal to recruit and retain the best for the services that we provide, and then what is the environment that we can attract them to, and make sure that, especially in a global pandemic, we are giving them the best opportunity to avoid burnout, to avoid depression, to avoid the anxiety, those types of things that have come upon us. And then, our neighbors is another constituent, we don't want to be bad neighbors, whether that's the Ridgecrest neighborhood or anywhere else, what we want to do is see folks say, wow, they dug in, built up, and it was beneficial to all of us, which is why in this, you see a lot of things, and it's more about pedestrian access, as opposed to a bunch of different road access areas and so forth. And so those are some of the perspectives that we brought to the table, and I share that just so that you understand our perspective as we continue to grow, most of our investments have been in the hospital at large at this point, as the facility exists, we have delayed the opportunity for professional buildings or other things that we would like to do as part of the district, to make sure this study was done, and that we understood as partners where we were going directionally, so that we got it right together, so we're pretty excited to see some things move forward, so that we can do our external projects, but do them the right way, so. Questions that I might be able to answer, if that would even be appropriate?
It's absolutely appropriate, we just, from our standpoint, we're just appreciative, and I think we've told you several times, that the partnership between us and SSM, and the fact that you have totally changed the direction of healthcare in Midwest City, just by your presence, so it's greatly appreciated, and it's visibly a better facility since you all took over, and we appreciate it, we really do.
I would like to add a little bit to that, about four years ago, I think it was, when we first started looking at-
About four years ago, I think it was, when we first started looking at, I won't say anything bad about the previous folks, because I've got plenty to say, but I'll keep them shut for once, looking for new suitors. And the council was very nice to say to Matt and I, vote for us to kind of just be the eyes and ears of the council. We sat in a lot of meetings, I mean, I'm talking, we're on our fourth or fifth year with this.
Six.
Six. And we had some really good meetings, and we've had some really bad meetings. St. Anthony's was by far and away the single best option that we had so far, in my opinion, they've over-promised, I mean, over-delivered and under-promised. We're going to have some growing pains with this. But I think 10 years from now, when we look back, the amount of money that's going to be spent on this project, between public and private, will probably be dwarfed by the amount of money that will be spent all around the district by other folks. I think it will be a very interesting, very fun, at times, especially when there's construction down the street that we like to drive down, will be not so much fun. But I think that this is the, for me, I'm going to speak for me, in the last six years I've been on the council, I think that the entire hospital going to SSM and this development will be the single largest economic development that this city will have seen in the last 20 or 30 years.
I agree.
We'd love for that to be true. We're happy to be a part of this.
Your partner.
We, we-
And hopefully, nobody has to utilize your facility too soon. But if, if you think about it, over the last year or so, one of the big criticisms in, around Midwest City and then into Dell City, too, was the lack of ambulance services. And you can't drive down the street now without seeing the St. Anthony's ambulance. So, I mean, that's a, that in itself has been a huge improvement.
Yeah.
You know? I had a client the other day in my office that said we had always sworn we'd rather die than live in the city's hospital, but they had a family member who went, and they said, "They've got such good care, we'd go back."
That's great to hear. That's great to hear. We're not perfect, but I'll tell you what, we try really hard.
You're pretty close.
We'll keep going. We'll keep going.
The bar was pretty low for years.
With that being said, does anybody else have any questions of Dr. Lewis or any of the, of the developer?
I'm all right. Brad?
Well, that being said, the chairer entertained a motion to adopt and accept the plan as presented.
Motion to adopt and accept the plan exactly as presented.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I believe that passes. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, very much for being here. Good job.
All right, gentlemen?
We're done.
Fast meeting.
We are hereby adjourned.